Good evening, everyone. I call this Marion City Council Workshop to order. Today is Wednesday, July 5, 2023, and time is 7:30. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll start the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Now, let's proceed to roll. So today, just to reflect that we have Mayor Pro Tim McCarron is absent from today's meeting, and we have councilperson Judy Fuller attending virtually.
Okay.
All other members are in attendance. We have the review of the amendments for June 7 and June 12, 2023, regular meetings, as well as the meeting preceding that, the June 12, 2023, closed session. Are there any comments or corrections in these minutes?
I'd like to make a comment about the discussion regarding the community village ordinance revisions, that removal of the restriction for a special home occupation business is by special exception, not by right, so that they can, that's not a blanket thing.
Special exception.
And I just would like to make sure that that's noted correctly.
Okay.
And then, on the second page, under the city manager's report, the third bullet point, the enhanced nutrient removal upgrade project, that doesn't seem to be correct. That should be the sewer relining and repair project.
Sewer rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation, thank you.
Correct. Claire, were you able to get those corrections?
I have those, yes.
Sounds good. Is there any other discussion for the review of the minutes? There are none. I am going to head over to the public hearing on the community village revisions to amend various provisions of section 205-35.1. I'm going to leave this public hearing open until the end of this meeting, and we'll close it right before adjournment. That means anybody who's looking to comment on this may approach and make any public comments that they have on their community village revisions. Is there anybody in the audience that...
I'm Jim Thomas. I'm D.O.R. I'm sorry I haven't been a part of this discussion, because I think partly what I need, and if anybody else does, more of a summary of what's been changed, but that might not be the scope of tonight in terms of the hearing. I think my overall concern, having been involved in Meads Crossing, particularly with some of these issues, is that I really see that these, that the community village overlay is really a design tool, and that it really brings some creativity to the process for creating new developments. My concern is, is, and again, this is the example of Meads Crossing, if it's not understood both by the planning commission as a tool, as well as the council, that history has shown is that developer often gets the increased densities that this can allow, but then there's no trade in terms of the design solutions that those increased densities are supposed to be a give and take to really build better communities. So I don't know if there can be something amended in here where there's training, both for the council and the planning commission, so that this is really understood as a design tool in a very positive way. Because otherwise, again, what history has shown is it just becomes an increased density tool with no way to really have the developer accountable for upholding their end of the deal in terms of the design standpoint. The other thing, I think, in general, that I notice is that new development in the town is really a third entity, meaning that we have urban design, we have suburban design, and then we have this third thing that's starting to happen, which is incorporated land that's developed. It's not quite suburban, it's not quite urban, and I think this is really meant to be a bridge for that, in a way, with mixed-use options, but I think it requires a vision from both you all and also the planning commission of what you exactly want, in terms of how you're going to build these bridges, in terms of using this as a design tool. So I think that's about it. I don't, again, I'll hear more. The only changes I saw in this were, in the beginning, about the percentage of land, depending on the size of development, and what could be multifamily developments as a percentage of the overall land requirements, I think, change. And maybe there were some smaller things, which I went through it pretty quickly, so I apologize, I can't give you more specific feedback. So I would just encourage training, both for you all and planning commission, so this can be an effective tool. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. May I just make a statement on that, regarding what Jim said? You know, in the example of Meads Crossing, there were places and times when the DARA was used to amend things, to cover for some things that didn't happen correctly, or did happen correctly, or whatever, and I think you're right, there is a measure of training in terms of the planning commission and for council to understand, you know, what the overlay says and what it means, and if you want, need to, for some reason, accede to some change to that for the development, that we need to make sure that we hold true to what we were trying to set out in the first place, and I think that that got lost in the Meads, in the Meads Crossing concept. And the other thing is the percentage of land use that applies only to the larger developments, anything over 150 acres. So that really, at this point in time, only refers to one property.
If I could, while we're between other comments, regarding that particular section, we've had some additional discussion regarding that, particularly the section that starts at line 53 in the ordinance about those mix limits, and in speaking with an engineer today about, about some of the revisions that we were, you know, proposing, the idea of, you know, looking back through our specific definitions, and our code does not define multifamily. So the changes that we were talking about here, we've been, townhomes sometimes get lumped into the umbrella of multifamily, but technically, they're attached to single-family dwellings, but there are multiple families within the same building. So when we, in looking through the definitions that are in the code for other types of dwelling units, I think that the intent is that multifamily is really an apartment-dwelling type of a scenario, and not a townhome. But because of that ambiguity, we've been thinking about townhomes with regard to this mix of use, mix of dwelling types, single-family detached homes, and then townhomes. The idea was not to give greater latitude to apartment buildings within community village, but to give greater latitude to townhomes. So over the next couple of days, I'll be speaking with this city attorney a little bit more about this, but in, you know, a quick vetting this afternoon of that, we may not, we may not keep that modification in there, we might just leave the wording the way it is now in the ordinance. But I think a follow-up ordinance would be helpful to add some definitions to the zoning chapter that wouldn't fall specifically under community village, but where we would specifically define multifamily, and maybe try to clean up any other areas where we've got terms referenced in other sections of the zoning code that really don't have a clear definition for, for the chapter. So that's, the jury's out right now on that. If we do remove that language, we'll notify everybody, and update them, power DMS, and, you know, circulate a new version of the ordinance.
It'll have to go back to planning commission at that point, and then come back here?
I don't think it's a substantive change, so I don't think that, that that would really be necessary.
And that would have to be inserted into the regular zoning code, not as part of this, or you're going to take this paragraph out and still do the definition?
If we do the definitions, that'll be a separate action, so that would go before the planning commission. But if we just want to basically amend the ordinance to not modify the mix limits as the current draft does, I don't think that, that would need to go back to the commission, because it's not a substantive change.
But if we do the definition, do we need to go back?
It would be a new ordinance, so it would get through the, right, it would go back to planning commission. Yeah. And if the city attorney feels like this change would need to go back to the planning commission, we certainly can do that, but I don't think it's of great substance that changes the overall ordinance.
The hearing on...
So in terms of the process, again, I don't know if this was my error or lack, but I know we've talked both from the planning commission with you all, how to get more public participation in this process, and I ended up emailing Darryl, and then Jim responded today with exactly what the ordinance was that was being changed. So that was not available to me in an easy way. I knew it was coming tonight, so if there's some way, again, to make this available, so we all know to say, here's the changes, here's what the implications are, I think it's going to be just a lot easier to get comment and to make it easier to, for folks to participate. And again, I might have missed that it was on the website, and I really appreciate that both Jim and Darryl responded very quickly, both with the whole new amendment, and then I just downloaded the old one and then went through it. But I think if those specific changes are highlighted, and the implications of those things for the town and for people who live here, that would be a very positive thing in terms of more steps to having better attendance and participation. Okay? Thanks.
Jim, are those available online currently?
I don't think they are. We can, we can certainly put it out there.
I don't think they are either, if I remember correctly, but I will say, want to be touched on a little bit later tonight, but one of the ideas is to basically have a way to where citizens can follow along with some of the changes that we're making, try to increase the transparency in the way that, the way that we're presenting things to the citizens. I'm going to be looking for ideas for that here in the future, and hopefully present something to council in the future on it.
Do we not need to change, to post, proposed ordinance revisions?
No, until we can, we can hear comments at the, at the hearing, and have further discussion, you know...
At a hearing?
Related to the hearing, you know, and it doesn't necessarily need to go all the way back through the process. If, if comments at a hearing or discussion among council members was such that there would be substantial changes, I would certainly recommend that it go back before the planning commission, but for something that's, that's minor...
But there's no requirement to post the ordinance and the changes ahead of a hearing like this?
No, no. I mean, the ordinance is, is, it was made available at the workshop last month, and at the meeting last month, there on the table as well, but we, we didn't post it online.
Yeah, for resolutions, you have to post it up, correct? That's the one that has to get posted up, to where people can see the head of time and everything.
We typically provide copy at the workshops and the meetings. Now, when the, not to spring it on our IT person, but when, when we have that IT position filled, that's vacant right now, we'll be getting back into trying to provide ordinances and resolutions in a format where you can see, look at the agenda on the website, and then click on that item and link it to the resolution or ordinance. That's some, that's some functionality we lost several years ago, and I'd like to restore that, but likely not until our IT department is fully staffed.
Was there any comments for any of our online fellows, councilperson Fuller, Attorney J. Goode, do you have any comments on the public hearing?
If you can hear me, I can just tell you that the way the city manager described the process is correct. Once it goes to the planning commission, you're pretty much done with the planning commission's input. You know, they can still comment at a public hearing or give you other information, but unless it's a huge substantial change, it's not required to go back. So you can have further public hearings or further discussions, there's nothing requiring you to act after a public hearing, but as you can think of the process, the purpose of hearing what the public has to say is supposed to make you want to maybe change the ordinance, and so it would just be an endless cycle if you just didn't have some finality, so.
Fair enough. I'm going to turn it back over to the audiences. Is there anybody else who would like to make further comment on the community village revisions?
I live in Meads Crossing, and I'm on the board as well. I just have a question. You mentioned the DARA information. I've searched the website, and I'm not able to locate that. Is it located, is that information on the City of Tawnytown website to access for the board as we're approving ARC requests coming in and following guidelines for the city and updating our guidelines for our residents? So we're all on the same page?
I see, Jay, you've appeared.
Yeah, I can answer the first part for you, ma'am. You're, it's like the voice in the sky. You're, the DARA's, there's several of them, and they're contained in the land records, and the city can get you the, the information to look them up in the land records.
Okay.
I don't know that it necessarily rates to the second part of what you said about approvals of how things come in and stuff, it would depend on that, but, but that's where you can find them.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to turn it back over to the audience once more before we continue on. Is there any more public, or, public comment for the public hearing on the community village revisions? It's going to remain open throughout this, in case anybody walks in that does have a comment. However, if you'd like to make a comment now before we move on, now's your chance.
So I'm Rachel Walthall from Meads, and I have a question, I guess. I'm wondering here where it speaks about prohibiting the use of above-ground swimming pools and individual storage sheds. Would that affect Meads Crossing as well, the prohibiting those things?
So I'll turn it over to the city manager, but as far as I'm aware, that language is archetypal.
And, right, typically, the hearings are for hearing comments, not so much a question-answer, but if, but I can respond if...
Yeah, if you don't mind.
So, uh, storage, individual storage sheds were allowed at Meads Crossing because of a modification to the ordinance that was done through a development rights and responsibilities agreement. Typically, in a community village, they're not allowed. The developer is supposed to address the storage needs in like a central storage facility if storage within the house or the garage is not deemed to be adequate. In the case of Meads Crossing, storage within the garages was initially deemed to be adequate, but then that wasn't communicated with home buyers as the neighborhood was, was, was being built, and then there was this disconnect, and city council decided that because of the residents were not appropriately informed of the regulation, that they would make an exception for Meads Crossing. So what's being passed here, the only thing that I think would directly affect Meads Crossing would be the removal of a prohibition for home-based businesses. Right now, in a community village, you can't have a, what's considered a home occupation special business, which would be like a family daycare, or something where you would have customers or an employee coming to your dwelling. Right now, you're not supposed to do them in a community village, including Meads, but if this passes with that change intact, then somebody in a community village will be able to open, to go through the process to open a family daycare or some other special exception business.
Okay. Thank you for allowing my question.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to turn it back over to the public as far as if there's any more public comment for the public hearing on the community village revisions. If not, we are going to head on to the next subject. I want to check if, I'm going to ask, is there any councilmembers who have a conflict of interest with any agenda items tonight?
No.
No.
Hearing none, I'm going to proceed further. So now, we are open to the public comment. Is there anybody who has public comment regarding non-agenda items? This isn't necessarily to the public hearing, this is any non-agenda item that you may have a public comment on.
Great. Good to see you back, Jim.
So, and again, this might have already been, let's say, solved or addressed. I was asked to be part of a beautification committee with Stephanie in town, blanking her last name across the street from Stephanie.
Yeah, Stevenson.
And I didn't know what had happened to that process of the Main Street Committee, for one, which was supposed to be, I think, happened a while ago, so that's sort of an open question. The second thing is in terms of the traffic pieces, which I know, Chris, you were a big part of. I was looking at traffic calming solutions in terms of sort of planting solutions along the street, and I'm in the process, I took some pictures of city hall, and I'm going to have them photoshopped, in terms of looking at planar solutions for the boulders that are in front of the building, for example. Another thing I'm proposing is that wherever there are yellow lines in the town, they would be put large planters along the yellow lines, so that visually, you start to create this atmosphere of some growth there, and the yellow lines are not blocked by parked cars, as visually, as well as people won't be opening their doors into planters when they park. So I'm going to try and get that together to give you all a visual look of what the streetscape could look like from a pretty, let's say, simple perspective in that way. I also think that street trees really need to be a big part of this. Driving down through Westminster, I'm just aware, again, where there's a canopy across the street, the difference that makes to slowing traffic down in a natural way, and I know Jim and I have had conversations where it's not necessarily the speed of the traffic, but the volume, that's an issue in Tawnytown, but I think from a pedestrian perspective, speed is still an issue in terms of safety, so I just want to support that. Again, I don't know what's being done in that way, so I apologize if these things are all, if this is redundant, and these kind of solutions are already in place, because I know they've been talked about, and I will work to get those photographs to you all so you can see what those changes look like, hopefully from a really pretty simple and inexpensive perspective. I also noticed in the parking lot next to here, there were some planters done along that back fence, which haven't been tended to in a while, so there are some little things, I think, if you start to look around, where some things can be done to really start to bring a really good energy back to the town in terms of flowers and, and trees and things that overall start to create a certain ambience for the whole town, which I think is really crucial to a downtown revitalization plan. Okay? Thank you.
Jim, just real quick, when you said yellow lines, are you referring to yellow, the curbs being painted yellow?
Yeah, yeah, where they're painted yellow.
Close the yellow line in the middle of the street.
Right, yeah, even to bring planters on that curb, because they're not one of three against the building from a visual perspective. It's not as effective, I think, for traffic, visual effect, and have to scale the planters in a way, because I helped Chris at Design Services get those little miniscule planters in there, and just as a design option, but they're not large enough visually, so I just wanted to put those there with him, so he can begin to see what the impact can be if they're scaled properly to the streetscape, and what that can do when there's a large stretch of them.
Yeah.
Just to check, Jim W., do we have a, do we have an update on Main Street Committee? Do we have any meetings that have been scheduled? I know we had the recent, was it the ARC Committee that met recently?
Arts and Entertainment met, but I think that MSHA is still waiting for the chairperson to...
For the chair for a general meeting.
To set dates. I don't know that, that there's any particular reason that the subcommittees have not met.
Okay.
At this point, I don't know how many of them have rounded up members for their subcommittees or not, because those would not be appointed by mayor and council, those are just strictly volunteers for, you know, that are not appointed by, by the city. So they, they really could be meeting at any point, although their meetings are supposed to be public.
Okay.
So we'll follow up on that, and MSHA is working to get a board meeting scheduled again.
Yeah, Jim's not here, so it wouldn't be fair to bring any of that up, because he's not here to answer on that. I do have some questions, and we can, we'll continue that one.
My name is Kenyatta Brooks. I'm a very longtime resident of Tawnytown. If you can correct me, city manager, did I overhear you say there is a position available in the city office?
In the IT department.
In the IT department. How, how do we advertise that?
It's on the city, city website, there's a help wanted tab at the, at the main...
It is.
Yes.
It is. I just want to, are we doing the paper or anything? I'm just trying to see, because we have so many new residents in Tawnytown, how are we making them aware? Because they don't often browse the Tawnytown's website to bring them in. You have so many sites that are, I guess I can maybe tag it on to maybe a Facebook post, but it would be a good idea to hire within, considering we are becoming more of a diverse community, and it would be nice to see some diversity in the city, in the city hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Carroll workforce development as one of the other advertisement routes, and we've been getting applications to there pretty regularly.
And it was in the Carroll County Times.
Was it?
It was run there also.
And I think interestingly, that position is...
We are trying to make sure it's the...
Something like that, or even, I was thinking maybe even in the local grocery stores, something that's small, where people, the community where we go, we shop here, we do everything here, even outside the town, and we pay our water bill. I've never seen, I pay my water bill here every time. I haven't seen the advertisement that you have a position available. We have several IT people in this community that come from homes, several of them that come from other states, other areas, and I just think it would be a good idea. And I'm not saying that the person that's in the higher position might be, you know, a minority, but, you know, I think it's a strong possibility that it could be, just to allow more people the opportunity to come into the city. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Is, we are still open to public comment for non-agenda items? If there's any more comments, may approach.
So I'm Rachel Walthall again. My comment or concern is in reference to the water bill. I'm new to the Carroll County, Tawnytown area. I lived almost 25 years in Baltimore County. I was floored when I got my water bill, like, just before the Christmas time compared to what I received prior to, and when I called to inquire, because going from 200 and something dollars almost to $1,000 kind of blew my mind. And so when I called to inquire, it was explained to me that it's a meter on how much water comes into my home, but there is no meter to determine how much goes out of the home, so basically, whatever I bring into the home is what I'm being charged that's going out of the home. And so in my mind, I'm thinking, well, and, and how it was explained to me, because it's going through a system, and it has to be treated and all of that, so am I thinking, while I'm talking to whoever answered the phone here, I'm saying to myself, well, if I'm watering my grass, that's not going back through the sewage. If I'm filling up bottles of water every day, that's not going back through the sewage. So I'm basically being charged for something that's not occurring, and so I want the city council to look into something better than just because I take X amount of gallons into my home, don't mean I send X amount of gallons... X amount of gallons into my home, don't mean I send X amount of gallons back out through the sewage to be treated. And that's how it, it was explained to me. And so if someone can tell me that it's different than that, then I'm open. I just, I don't understand that process, because, like I said, I could be storing buckets of water in my home, and it never goes back out through the system, but yet, that's where the bulk of my bill is coming from, what's going out of the home versus coming in, and there is no way to meter what's going out of my home. So I'm very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment from the, or is there any more public comment from the public right now? Is there any additional concerns? As far as water goes, I'm going to see if we can add a separate water discussion for August to the agenda, so that City Council can actually discuss it thoroughly, and that way we have some time to review everything that's going on, and we'll try to address it in the August workshop, where we'll have public comment, and where the council will hopefully be ready to go over a question like that, have all the information, try to figure out what we can do in terms of citizen concerns. I appreciate you bringing that up. Last call for public comment on non-agenda items. Hearing none, we are going to go into resolution ordinances and agreements. Today, we have nothing being introduced, and we are having discussion on the adoption of a couple of different ordinances. First up, what we're going to see Monday is the ordinance 05-2023-Community Village Revisions-Section 205-35.1. I'm going to open the floor for discussion from council. Is there anybody on council that has any comments or concerns regarding the adoption of that ordinance before Monday?
The revisions that we were just talking about in terms of the density, will that be available for Monday and revised for the ordinance?
Prior to Monday, yes.
So either you're going to take it out or not take it out, but that'll be done by Monday?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go over some of the highlights for folks that weren't around last month when we introduced it?
If you don't mind.
Okay, sure. So we touched a little bit earlier about the mixed limits and the idea of whether it's multifamily or townhouse, and so that, that part may, may not end up changing. But in addition to that, some of the other kind of highlights are that currently, Community Village requires that all the dwellings be served by alleys with, with few exceptions. The ordinance basically gives a developer the opportunity to be excused from that alley obligation if they provide a greater amount of open space, and the relief for the, from the alleys would just be for single-family dwellings. So the idea is that townhome areas would still be largely served by alleys, but single-family homes, if the developer provides additional open space, they would not have to serve the single-family detached homes with alleys. So that's one of the more substantial changes to the ordinance, and we've realized that with Mead's Crossing, we actually have more on-street parking in the townhouse areas than really seems to be needed. So in the evenings and on weekends, there are a lot of open parking spaces there. Now, we still have some issues where folks might park where they're not supposed to, instead of using those, those dedicated, or those off-site parking lots, but, but we found that on, on a typical evening or weekend, there's lots of open space in those auxiliary lots, so we think that the parking requirement may actually have been a little higher than it needed to be. So in this case, we've, we've reduced the off-street parking. If, if a townhouse only has two parking spaces, they only have to provide, basically, a half a space overall per townhome. So that changes a little bit, it lightens the parking requirement a little for the developers. And then it goes on to address some of the driveway requirements and parking requirements that would be related to the rear-loaded alleys versus front-loaded garages, or rear-loaded garages and, and townhomes. So most of it has to do with the alleys and the parking requirements and the aesthetic there of moving away from the alleys for some of the projects. And I guess those are really the key, the key items, so. And it does also remove the prohibition for a home occupation special use, so somebody could go, it would still go through the same process it does elsewhere in the city. So a family daycare, for example, could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, where there would be a public hearing, and the immediate neighbors would be notified of the hearing. So it would still go through that process, but right now, a community village resident doesn't have the opportunity to go through that process. So the ordinance would allow that for a community village. So I think that's kind of the highlights of it, just for folks that might not have heard last month.
Just to check after that, do we have any discussion from council member, any additional discussion from council members regarding the community village revisions? Anybody virtually? Sounds good. We will then go into Resolution 2023-10, Water Allocation for June. Do I have any comments from council members regarding the water allocation for June?
No.
Sounds good, we will proceed. We are now at Resolution 2023-11, Rules for Bollinger Park. These are just establishing the rules to the park, as it's going to be one of our new parks. Was there any comments or concerns from council members in regards to these rules that are being established, or possibly established?
Just a, a couple of highlights of what's different about Bollinger Park from our other parks, and that is that the hours are going to be dawn to dusk, rather than 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. that we have at other parks. You know, because obviously this is a more rural area, and we specified no campfires. Elsewhere, we say without a permit from the city, but here, we, the plan was to prevent campfires completely, and, and also that, that we're saying no camping. That's not specified for other parks, but we, again, because of the nature of this park, we thought it was worthwhile addressing that upfront. So those are kind of just some of the highlights of what's a little bit different about these rules than we see posted for the other parks. And also, there's a mention of fishing in Piney Creek.
Is that a stock stream?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Do I have any additional comments from council? Hearing none, we are going to proceed to the City Manager Report.
So not a whole lot new in the, in the written report, as I noted, had to turn this in a little early because of the MML conference that I attended last week, but I do have an update, and it's also in the Public Works Department's report on Broad Street and Robert Small Road. So the, the water line in Broad Street has been completed and connected to the city system. It was bacteria-tested past those tests, and now they're in the process of tapping the new main for the lateral lines, for the service lines to the properties on either side. Once that's done, they're going to go back down to the bottom of the hill again and start on the storm drain. After that, will be curb and gutter and a base coat of paving for Broad Street. The current estimate is for that to be, I'm going to jump down to Kevin's report real quick and make sure I don't misspeak, I believe that's targeted for the end of August at Yes, targeted for the end of August. So Broad Street has taken much longer than expected because of the rock that, that the contractor hit, that really slowed things down, but hopefully, now that the deep stuff is pretty much done, hopefully it will move along at a much faster pace. Let's see, Charter and Code Review, we've already talked about Community Village. So this is also mentioned in the Public Works Report, but I did want to highlight that the dig and replace portion of the fiscal year '22 sewer rehabilitation project is completed now, so we're completely done at Meadow Brook, the line by the elementary school, and also Fairground Avenue. So the, the lining contractor in situ form is on site, and they're expected to complete their work within the next week. So weren't able to completely get it done before the end of the fiscal year, but we got pretty darn close. And along with that, our numbers at the treatment plant, as you'll see in the Public Works Report, are also showing very positive results from that. Let's see, okay. An update for, mostly for council here, the, we had a crack in a pipe at the, an underground pipe at the wastewater treatment plant, and because of the depth and proximity to some other utilities, we brought in another contractor, we brought in Delauter, because they were already mobilized in town, they were able to, the, what we thought was a flange just outside the foundation of the building actually turned out to be, when they excavated down far enough, that the pipe cracked right where it goes through the foundation of the blower building. They were able to chip away the concrete around it and put a sleeve around the pipe today, so that was just, the repair was just done today. And while they were digging right there, they decided to go ahead, and a very good move on their part, and excavate for the pipe for the second digester, that they didn't, you know, have any evidence of a leak, but they were put in at the same time, same conditions, so they decided to dig it up and take a look. It was also cracked in the same spot, so they were able to also put a sleeve on that to patch it. They ran both digester pumps, you know, and didn't see any leaks after the repair. So they'll be, I believe, encasing those in concrete and then backfilling. So, so we're looking good on the repair there as of this afternoon. So we can put that one behind us. And also, we knew when the, when the de-watering project comes through, those lines are going to be changed from pressure lines to suction lines, so we shouldn't have to worry about that, that type of leak again. So, so some good news there. I mean, it obviously costs us some money for having to bring a contractor in to make the repair, but it's done, so.
Were the cracks from differential settlement or fatigue?
I don't know for sure. I would, I would imagine being right at the foundation, probably differential settlement.
Have we put, did we cushion them in any way? Are there link seals where they go in through the foundation, or were they?
I don't believe so.
Concreteed right around?
I think they were concreted right around it.
So are we cushioning them with link seals or something this time around so that we don't do this again?
I can share a photo with you.
Okay.
And follow up with Kevin tomorrow.
That's fine, that's fine.
But I was wondering, and was going to follow up with Public Works tomorrow, because I simply don't know, in a situation like this, if there is going to be concrete encasement, you know, does that, do they epoxy rebar into the foundation and anchor the, you know, the, the concrete encasement to that, so that you don't get the differential settling?
Right.
I, I don't know if that's routine or not, but.
It depends on condition, but.
Right.
Yeah. Because if you don't do something, even if you encase it, you still.
Right.
Have that possibility.
Right. And that, that's kind of what.
Because the other thing that happens in that instance is where the metal pipes go into a concrete structure without any cushioning, is they fatigue from just the expansion and contraction and the vibration of, you know, of just pipes that's in use, so in either case, they, they need to be cushioned in some manner.
I'll make sure Public Works is aware of the comments and suggestions before they backfill, and I imagine that our director is probably watching this, so.
Yeah, I'm sure he, yeah, I'm sure his answers to the question would be satisfactory, I just want to.
Sure.
Get him out there.
Okay. And that's, that's about it for, for my report, unless anyone has questions.
Any questions at the council level? Sounds good, we are heading into the department reports. Are there any questions or concerns regarding the department reports?
I have a couple, but I'm going to leave, since Councilman McCarron is not available, I'll leave my questions for a later time on the economic development. And there is what looks like kind of a typo on the, in the IT Department, Item 7, says we have seven no reads on our MXU worksheet. This has not changed from the 10 as of last report, so is it seven or is it 10? This, that's.
Okay.
Me being.
We'll get clarification.
Yeah. And then I did want to ask, I was having a conversation with someone from the Community Media Center, who said that there is a fiber line that is a direct feed back to the Community Media Center that we are not using. At this time, for these meetings, in order for them to broadcast them as they do, it's part of what they do, they actually have to essentially pirate it down off of the YouTube channel and send it out, whereas if we were feeding this directly to them, they could be broadcasting it live on the Community Media Center channel, and also, they wouldn't have to go through the extra step of, of pirating it down from YouTube. Just, but I, I don't know, and, and I'm sure Dan, you're listening, we can have a discussion about this later, but I wanted to bring it up.
And I believe that a link has been offered to the Media Center in the past, so that they could tap into the live stream as well, but I, I'm not sure the logistics.
And whether, yeah, the logistics of the conversation, one or the other, I've broken down. I was, like I said, I was just in a conversation with someone there, and that was brought up.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have for right now. Oh, one other quick question, I'm sorry, on the wells, well number eight, does the graph going back up indicate that the water level is higher or lower? I'm confused.
Okay, let me get to the graph real quick.
Because most of the others seem to be, okay, there's a little bit of change in 12 also, but I just was wondering what, whether that was.
Well number eight, that's, that's showing recovery, so the water level is getting higher further away from the pump.
Gotcha. And well number 12, it went down for some reason, looks like.
Correct.
12 and 15.
Yes.
Okay. Are we, is that just a matter of because we're drawing from one or the other, or differently, or?
Well, we are in, and things may have changed a bit since our recent rains, but, you know, we, Maryland has been, most of Maryland's been in a moderate drought condition, so we can expect that, that our water levels are going to drop. So I think the recent rains have helped a bit, and if I understand correctly, our part of the county actually got a little more rain this time than elsewhere. Normally, it's the other way around, everybody gets rain but us. So, so that's optimistic, but we'll see the next time the county checks the monitoring wells and so on, if, if levels seem to be rebounding a little bit thanks to the recent rain.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other council questions or discussion for the department reports? Hearing none, I'm going to proceed further to the legal report with Jay.
Good evening. If you can hear me, I think I'm on twice.
Yeah, we got you.
We hear you on twice for some reason.
So I do all the legal report in advance, and we can go over that if we need to, as needed, depending on the subject matter, but the important part to mount is that the city has reached a settlement as part of the PFA settlement, water pollution settlement. Our litigation counsel announced that we reached a $12.35 billion settlement, not just for our city, but for nationwide, with one of the polluters, which was 3M. We've already reached a settlement with Dupont, and we're in bankruptcy proceedings with Kitty, and so there's still some road to go on this, but it's very positive that the city will be receiving compensation for the contamination it has in its wells.
Was that the end for your report? Just check.
That's it, unless you have any questions.
Do we have any questions, concerns, comments from council?
No.
Hearing none, I appreciate your report. Just to check. Just check council. Sounds good. Thank you. Hearing none, proceeding into new business. We have the monthly financial report. Is there any comments, concerns, questions from council regarding that? Hearing none, we are heading down to accounts payable as a new business. Once again asking, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, we are proceeding to the long-awaited portion of my night chicken husbandry. So I'm going to open it up to council for discussion on chicken husbandry. Who would like to go first?
Didn't wonder if Jay was chiming in or not or...
Just here, I'll lead some of it off. Just to lead it off, as I said before, we particularly don't need to have ordinance before. It's just, yeah, I think we should come to the consensus of whether we actually do want chickens or we don't want chickens. And from there, city council should coordinate what kind of ordinances they'd like to see with the city manager. And from there, we can start drafting some examples to be presented at the workshop in August. And from there, we can discuss some of the examples for that. Again, that's one way, on Monday I'll just be asking for a consensus one way or another, for a yes or a no. And we'll go from there as far as figuring out how do we figure out something that's enforceable in that direction.
I mean, I think if we've already said that we are going to do this, then we have said we're going to allow chickens. I think that at this point, that question to me, I don't know, you know, whatever else your council thinks, but to me that question seems settled.
That's what I, that's how I see it right now, is that it sounds like we're going to allow chickens. But if that is the case, I can get consensus at the workshop for that. Can I not, it's not a particular...
It's not a formal action.
So let me go ahead and ask council for a consensus on whether they would like to allow chickens or not allow chickens. And from there, I'm going to request that any specific ordinance examples we send to the city manager so that we can draft some examples for August, we'll present to the workshop the examples, and then an introduction on that Monday meeting in August after we go through the examples.
Fine with me. Judy, I think, had you done some research on this, correct?
Yeah, because we have. We've talked about it a lot in the past and it was never... I don't think anybody was ever really against the chickens. It was a matter of how we were going to do it in such a way that we could make sure that it was safe and effective and that we didn't take up an immense amount of city staff time trying to keep everything in order. So, you know, if we're all in sync with having chickens, then yeah, let's go on to the next step.
Goodbye me. Everybody else?
Sounds good. Do I need a formal IRNA for the consensus? It sounds like we have consensus. So from here, my only request to council was please send any ordinance examples that you'd like to see for the city manager to consider. And zoning, when they start drafting these examples for August, please send them their way so we can get some examples before you at the August workshop. And from there, we'll discuss at the August workshop over the examples that have been presented.
Okay. I just, you know, I just ask everybody that they come in, make sure that everybody gets, on council gets copied so we can comment. And, you know, we can cobble together the best of what we can find.
Just to be on the safe side, be careful with the commenting and whatnot. We can't discuss the actual ordinance through emails. Again, my best, my recommendation is to send any examples that you have to the city manager. We'll get some drafts ready for the August workshop and from there we'll present them for discussion to council. Just to be on the safe side of everything.
And I'd like to point out that, you know, as I work with our director of planning and code enforcement officer, who will undoubtedly be the one tasked with enforcing this ordinance, that we, whatever we adopt, we think with an eye towards enforcement. And what are we going to do when we get the complaint that somebody is not, you know, not properly caring for the chickens? Or that they're not adhering to whatever the, you know, specifics of the ordinance are? Whether we end up issuing a permit to have, you know, a backyard flock or whether we just enact regulations and expect everybody to follow it without getting a permit is certainly an option. But then, just like we have people that don't pick up after their pets now, I'm sure we will have people that don't follow the rules. And what we do about that is really the crux of, you know, our issue. And I think that's part of why we never moved forward before was, well, what are we going to do? We send them a letter and they don't do anything. So what do we do next? And things kind of fell apart when we've had the conversation before. So that's really what the zoning administrator and I are going to be focused on is, you know, the ordinance is kind of the easy part. It's what do we do with the people that don't follow it that becomes the challenge.
Right, and the ordinance in such a way that it's enforceable.
Right. And much of our, much of our code is very challenging in that regard because here in Carroll County, it's up to the municipalities to prosecute municipal infractions. And that's a challenge.
So just hold that in consideration as you're sending the recommendations and to city staff. Just make sure we have a variety of different ways that we can go about it and when we present it to the workshop in August.
Most of what we've seen from previous instances, and I know Councilwoman Fuller sent some samples already as well, you know, most of those treated as a zoning issue. So I imagine we'll probably end up doing something very similar.
Sounds good. Do we have any further discussion, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none, I am heading into the license agreement for Bonja Park encroachment. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the license agreement as presented?
The only question I have is that there's obviously some junk that's on city property. Are they required to clean that up or as long as they hold the license to use the property, they can keep what they've got there?
The, I'll use the term rubbish, and you can see in the photographs that were distributed, is to be removed. So the only thing that we'll be encroaching is the sheds and items within the sheds and then the portion of the pool that overlaps the property boundary. So the, basically the junk...
Scaffolding the car, the tires, all that has to do with it.
Right. And the property owner is aware of that and is... While there have been some health limitations currently, he's aware that he needs to be working on that in the coming months. And the plan is that that will all be cleared up before the park opens.
From there, I've added to the discussion, or I've added to the agenda discussion on term limits. I know it's a more sensitive subject, but the idea of adding it is that one of the main things I heard throughout this process and since I've been mayor is how do we invite more people to take part in local governance? Entrenchment is an idea that follows local politics. The longer you've been in an office, the harder it is to remove somebody from that office. Term limits, in my opinion, are a fair compromise in all of that. I'm looking for any council discussion on any ideas, questions, comments, concerns, pros, cons, anything that they would have in regards to term limits.
Do we know what surrounding municipalities do as far as term limits are concerned?
So in my...
They have term limits.
They do not have term limits. Okay. I'm going to have a few comments if that's okay. So term limits only work if you have people that actually want to run for office. The reason we have so many people who stay on for so long is because nobody else is willing to put themselves out there to run. It's not about having an invitation to run. This is something that you have to take the initiative to do, just like everybody up there did. If you talk to anybody in smaller local governments, you'll find that having term limits, when you're talking about a smaller government, kind of removes accountability because it does take longer than one term to get a lot of things done. So every time you put somebody new in, you lose those projects. And if you don't lose the projects, then you have projects that fail and they simply get blamed on the people that have left. It almost takes a full term to even learn how to do the job right. You get, if you start having this four-year turnover for every single person, you get inconsistent policies. You know, we've had complaints that our charter and our ordinances and stuff aren't, you know, consistent as it is. That comes from having too much input and not enough follow-through. And you can't get follow-through if you don't have people who know what's going on. I mean, there's been complaints about the old school people or, you know, the old guard or whatever. And I find those terms offensive at this point because those are the people that are willing to step up and take on these roles and have been involved in their community and are willing to put themselves outside of a comfort zone in order to get things accomplished. People can complain all day long, they can get on Facebook, but that doesn't get things accomplished. You have to show up and you have to be willing to put yourself out there. I get that we want more people involved. This is not a birthday party where we send out invitations. It's a government. If you want to be involved, you show up, you volunteer your time, and you learn what's going on in the community. The people who show up and come to the meetings are those people. If they want to run for a council seat, then they run for a council seat. And just like we've seen, if they have enough citizens who like what they say, then they will get elected. Whether there's a follow-through or not, that's where the accountability comes in and they'll either win a reelection or they won't. But there was an awful lot of talk this past election about how we were going to get so many people to run and it didn't happen. So I don't know how you think term limits would benefit anybody. We would end up with three empty seats and, you know, people who come in and move in and have no idea what's going on in our city, running just because nobody else is doing it. And then we're in a pot of hot water. I'll just leave it at that.
So one of the things I will say as I'm talking about term limits, I'm not talking about limiting to four years. That would, I agree, that would be a little absurd. The idea would be almost something along the lines of 12 years for a councilperson, eight years for mayor, something along those lines or something similar. I guess the question is, is, as I was running, for instance, there is definitely an entrenchment. There is, I know you don't like to talk about an old guard, but I felt it. I know a guard that was basically in opposition. I had letters written about me. I had, again, it is an election, but the idea is you talk about inviting new people to run for these positions. A lot of, I shouldn't say scared of the repercussions of running, but some people are hesitant on what may happen to them from people who are the old guard.
Well, again, you don't run an election in a city government by attacking the people that you then have to work with. That's just kind of a common sense. You can come in with ideas, but you don't make accusations, especially if you haven't been involved prior and don't know how things work. You know, you have to be involved beforehand. You have to know what's going on and you have to know the truth of the matters, not just what you hear from people who heard from somebody else who read it on Facebook.
The, I think, you know, as a libertarian, my position on this is that you should not have term limits. And I would say, my experience in six years here, is that if we had term limits, we would have problems because we wouldn't have people running for office. You know, Councilman McCarron and I ran unopposed for two open seats. I found that incredulous.
I know.
You know, in the last council election, there were three council people running for reelection and only one person who stepped up to run to replace any of them. So I would tend to agree with Councilwoman Fuller on that. And if there were a line of people, you know, lined up to want to run and they, you know, they were being good old boyed out or whatever, that would be one thing. But right now, we don't have, it's hard enough just to get enough people to run, much less have a surplus and have people, you know, being shut out in some way or another. So while I understand the desire, you know, I look at, and Mayor McCarron is kind of an exception. He was mayor for 12 years. So he did run, he did get three terms. But I don't know, looking back in the city's history, how many more mayors there were that had, that were in office for that period of time. You know, or how many council people have served for continuously for more than 12 years. You know, so the question is, you know, is there actually a need for this at this time?
So to go back to the 2021 election, yes, there was one person who ran against the three incumbents, but the three incumbents did send out a mailer, basically joining in a team against the one incumbent that ran. The idea is entrenchment and the power of incumbency is strong. It isn't something that you can just say it doesn't exist. For me, for instance, it was an uphill battle to beat a mayor and a sitting councilperson. It was a very uphill battle. It took a lot, took a lot of work. And I would tell you, the people that, the people that I ran against, that's what they believed, is that they were entrenched enough to where they could win their position. While that's not true, hard work will always prevail, there still needs to be safeguards to it, in my opinion.
I mean, you're actually kind of making, you're making the argument against yourselves there because you showed that it was possible. So if it is possible, then why do we need to enact the legislation?
It's, I will tell you, I had to do a lot to make it possible.
Well, and you decided that you wanted to do that. So you made that decision and you came out and put yourself out there and put in the effort to do it. So, you know, who's to say that somebody doesn't want to put out that much effort to replace you? I just don't think it's, I'm not generally in favor of term limits. I think if we had an issue where we had, you know, people who, three or four of us have been up here for 20 years, you know, and that was, and that created a problem, I think you... Then there may be a discussion worth having about that. But in my experience in the six years that I've been here in Tawnytown, I think we've seen more turnover on council in those six years than they probably had seen in the last 20. So I'm not entirely certain that, you know, this kind of legislation is needed at this time.
So for seeing the turnover anyways, what's the harm of the legislation? Besides just add another safeguard for the citizens to be able to come into play here? Again, it's, again, there is a strong, consistent basis of the power of incumbency. It's, we all know.
I'm not denying that. I mean, there's definitely a power of incumbency. But, you know, in a small-town environment like this, I'm not, I don't believe that term limits are needed at this time.
So just to go back into it. There, I know there was talk that there isn't, there isn't an old guard. There isn't something that's keeping people from coming up and doing this. However, when I was asking why weren't people running for this council, these council positions, the number one answer was they were scared of what was going to be put out against them. They were scared of what was going to be put out against some other people who are already sitting up here. And I will tell you, I had letters about me sent out by councilpersons.
Say that again?
I think that's politics though. I mean, that's just like...
But the idea is that that is still part of the term limit argument. Is that as longer people sit there, the longer they band together to keep those positions. It's the, it's the entrenchment tactic for seats. It's well-known, it's well-known in politics. I, again, the idea of term limits in no way benefits me. I'd even go as far as to say, and we need to look at lowering the residency requirement of the mayor in Tawnytown to two years from five years. As, if you look at all the other towns around us, for instance, Union Bridge, you have to live in Union Bridge for one year to run for mayor. Tawnytown, you have to live here for five years to run for mayor. We have a lot of new citizens that are coming to this town and there's no reason they shouldn't be able to take part in their local government. If you look at just about every city around us, Westminster, if I believe you're correct, one year. If you look at Hampstead, it might be two years. But the idea is we have a five-year, you have to live here for five years... But the idea is we have a five-year, you have to live here for five years to run for mayor of Tawny Town.
Well, if you want to change that, then suggest changing that. I don't, I, I think term limits are part of that solution.
All this ties into this. There, there needs to be an avenue for more citizens to be able to take part in their local governance.
I agree with that.
There is no stumbling block. Why citizens can't run for office? They don't run for office because they don't want to.
So even as I initially ran, probably.
You made a comment about some citizens being afraid to run for what reason?
Just because of what will be put out against them by the old guard.
I don't believe that.
I can send you examples of it if you'd like.
Yeah, I want to see that.
That's fun. But again, the general idea is the entrenchment is a tactic in small towns. There's a reason we have 20-year mayors. There's a reason we have 20-year sitting councilpersons. It's not because people don't run against them. People have ran against them.
No, it's because people don't run, don't put themselves out there like Judy said.
I mean, and I feel like even at these meetings, and I know I haven't been doing this long, but there was definite resistance to me sitting in this seat. It's not a secret. But even at these meetings, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people here.
And that's a lot.
It is a lot compared to some other months because sometimes there's none.
It's one or two.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the solution is.
So, just to give up, the first month that I announced that I was going to run, I had a councilmember and mayor come up to me, both say, basically, you stand no chance. You should drop out and back them. That is, that is part of it as well, is that they believe, it's hard to describe, but people believe that these positions are granted to them, that this is something they need to be in for 20 years. I know that council doesn't believe that, but if, if it doesn't happen, then why don't we just put the term limits in? It's just a safeguard for citizens.
Well, that, to me, that's like saying you don't want somebody to steal your car. So instead of just locking the door, you blow it up. It's overkill. And it, it doesn't matter about the running, the, the term limits in and of itself prevents people who want to run to fill spaces that otherwise would be empty to run. People didn't want you to run at the beginning because you had never been to a meeting, you had never been involved, we had never seen you at an event, you didn't volunteer your time, you, we, no one knew who you were or what your plan was. People did not tell you not to run because they didn't think you deserved a position. They just thought it was strange that you had never done anything and then showed up and decided that the solution was for you to be the mayor because you were angry about one thing or whatever it was. You didn't like the way you had to wait for a county permit to open your business or whatever it was. Because that's not the right reason to run for an office. People run for an office because they want to make a long-term commitment to their community to make things better, not because they are personally offended by something that happened to them. Now, if they can't handle being called out on things, then they shouldn't run because you're going to get called out by citizens every single day. If your skin is not thick enough to take criticism for mistakes, then you probably should second-guess because you're going to get called out by the citizens. Every single person up there, and I'll leave Beth out of it, but Beth has dealt with it on her own on Parks and Rec, people call you out and every single person has their own agenda. You can't always make everybody happy. And everybody that's up there that's been elected knows that. But they have been elected by citizens who have decided, for whatever reason, that those are the people that they want to represent them. If there's an issue, if you want to get more people involved, then start having, you know, the little roundtable discussions or open forums for people to have discussions. We'll do extra stuff. But when it comes down to it, they have to put themselves out there and make a commitment. I would be the first one to say, if there were five other people running and I lost, congratulations. More power to you. I hope you do great things. Nobody up there wants the town to fail just because they want a seat. They want to see things improve. But I think that a lot of people need to decide or, or maybe re-educate themselves on what a local government's job is as opposed to county or state because it's not the same. And you're not going to find the same people that are running. And term limits is going to do nothing but create these holes that aren't going to be filled.
I mean, you look at it as a safeguard, I don't look at it as a trap. You know, because if you, you know, if we can't get enough people to run as it is and you have somebody term-living it out and then you have an open seat, then how do you fill it? If, if, if the situation were different and, and, you know, like I said, people were being shut out, I can't, I don't know, you know, I, I've scratched my head trying to think of people who would want to run.
And I have asked people to run. Oh, I'll think about it. No, I don't think so.
So just to touch on a point, Councilmember Fuller, you're actually one of the reasons I ran. Your conduct for citizens is actually what led me down this path in 2021. I came to the candidate forum where some of the interactions you had as far as one of the other candidates answering questions is, was, wasn't pleasing to me. And that's actually what led me down this path. So I do thank you for initiating that in me to go this path. But it wasn't because I was angry about a permit or anything like that. It was actually the interaction of council and citizens. For instance, think about this. So for councilperson Chaney's seat, five people submitted their applications, if I am correct. So some of these five people, I've talked to a couple that submitted for the seat. Their number-one sentiment for not running is, well, it's the Good Old Boys Club. How am I supposed to beat them? I mean, even when.
Of those five people, only three people were actually qualified as far as their, where they lived. You have to live within city limits. And part of filling a seat, when you have an opening like that, is picking somebody, again, who's already involved so that we don't have to start right from the scratch, you know, getting them just caught up with everything. That's different than an election. You expect it during an election time, not when you're filling an empty seat.
I think, I, I think we've beaten this horse pretty solidly.
I agree.
So I don't think, you know, I, I, I don't know who else, I don't remember who else applied for the seat when it was open back in December. I know I did. I didn't get chosen for it, so I decided to run for the office. You know, if it's something that you want to do, you feel like you need to do, you do it. And if you don't, you don't. And right now, we have not enough people who want to do it. You know, but I look at the folks that are sitting right here and you have this confused look on your face like, how come people aren't, aren't doing this? And, and I would encourage you guys that, you know, there's an election coming up in, in two years. And if you want to become part of this, become part of it. To everybody who's out there listening right now and, you know, whoever may be watching this on, on this livestream or pick this up on the YouTube channel later on. I know that last month, there were 40-some people who watched this at different times during the, during the meeting. And over 200 people viewed the, viewed the YouTube video later on. There are people who are interested and I encourage those interested people to get involved.
I agree. We've beat it too much. But again, just closing statement, I will always agree that term limits are needed in just about all forms of government. It encourages participation, prevents entrenchment, promotes fresh ideas. There's no reason somebody should be sitting on the council for 20 to 30 years. It's a problem that we face across this country and.
We face it in Congress, but we don't face it here at this table.
So, just to add, the amount of council years on this council right now, we're approaching 60 years of council experience combined between the people with, that's with three new councilmembers, or with a new mayor and two new councilpersons on this board. We're approaching 60 years of combined council service. Council and mayor service, I should say. That is a lot of years to be entrenched in a local government. So while I do believe it's changing, I believe people can get more actively involved. I believe we should continue to have safeguards so citizens can get involved as they want to be, as they, as they need to be. There is, I'll tell you, when I decided to run, my wife laughed at me. How are you going to beat people who have been up there for however many years? How are you going to beat a sitting councilmember, a sitting mayor? And it did it. Again, it took a lot, but it shouldn't take that much. I had to do a lot. I was out there every single day and the only.
But that's how it should be. Like, this is a lot. That's how it should be.
No, I agree. That is how it should be.
Like, I should have to fight for this seat every single day. I should do what they want, what is best for them. It's not about how much work it is for me.
Why didn't the other two do it?
They didn't want it. That's why you're here.
They also didn't have $16,000 to spend. And I think, well, you want to talk about changing things. We can do an election reform and then that will make it easier for more people to run because they don't have to run against people who spend way more money than can be afforded by the regular person.
I think we're getting off of this subject and probably devolve.
I agree.
I think we should wrap this up.
I agree with election reform if you have term limits because there has to be a safeguard on both. The entrenchment, because it does, it costs a lot to run against an entrenched opponent. And that's the idea. That's the first step to it, is term limits. It is a multi-step process to allow people to become part of the, part of the system. But I agree. Let's proceed forward. Next, we have the Maryland Municipal League Experience. Council members, would you like to go first?
Sure, I'll start and I'll kick that off. Happy to do that and change it to a much happier subject. I was very, very pleased to attend my first MML conference. I spent a lot of time in the exhibit area, talking to various vendors who supply goods and services to municipal governments. Learned a lot there. I attended a number of sessions. I am now a certified planning commission member. Went through a three-hour course on that and have four pages of notes to go for it. And there were a lot of, a lot of good sessions, sessions geared to new, new members of, of councils as well as a lot of, a lot of information for not just the technical side of it, but, you know, sessions on how the conflict resolution and, and how to, how to deal, how to deal with people and how to deal with the public. Subjects about how to, how to approach an annexation, you know? How to deal, how to speak to the media, how to speak to the media. These were all sessions that I attended. So there's a lot of good information. I have about 12 or 14 pages of notes here from the various sessions I attended. And I think the one single most sage piece of advice, I attended a session that was, you know, 30 tips on, for, for new councilpeople. And the very first thing that they, that they said was probably the most, maybe the most important is pace yourself. It's a long run. You don't have to try to get everything done in the first six months. So that's, you know, that, that, that reminder was worth the trip to Ocean City. So I have a lot of information about things like speed cameras, various, you know, we, we talked a few, a little bit ago about trees and tree canopy. I actually had the discussion with two different people with, including a member of the Mountain Department of the Environment. There's a 5 Million Tree Initiative out there. And there are programs where we can look at the trees that were placed here during streetscape, which, some of which are short and ugly, but some of which have to be short and ugly because there's overhead wires. But on the sides where there isn't overhead wire, maybe we can look at different, at different trees. And I think that those are things that we can, we can look at. And those are kinds of, that's something that I would never have picked up or thought of on my own if I hadn't been to the conference. So it was a, it was a good few, five days for me and, and I was very much appreciative of being able to go down.
So black mark on Chaney's record. I did not take this seat until December and already had a family obligation last week, so I did not attend.
I'll go in.
Okay. I did, because I had to leave the conference early, my husband got sick, we had to come home. I did not get the opportunity to attend all the sessions that I wanted to, most of which took place on the day I had to leave. But I did manage to, that first day, I went to a session on effective councils. That was very interesting. The opening session, I thought, was an interesting topic because it's a topic that we all need to be concerned with, mental illness. I thought the speaker left a little bit to be desired, but the information was good. I went to, I also attended on that same day a session on the national economy. And they explained why the feds like to keep the patient at 2% as opposed to wherever we are now for, I think. And I always attend any session on grant funding. I'm always looking for money. So I understand that there are grants with the Chesapeake Trust Grant Fund, their DNR grants. Jim, did you attend any of that session?
I didn't attend that one.
Okay, but I thought it was interesting that there are grants out there for Public Works. And the one that I'm seeking, they didn't really tell me anything that I didn't already know, but it just, I just have to keep at it. Because the one grant that almost anybody can qualify for, that's the problem. Anybody can qualify for. So, you know, it closes up rather quickly.
I, I'll have to see if I can get the information over to you. I sat at lunch with a gentleman who runs a program for the state to wrap up small municipalities, to take their projects and wrap a bunch of them up and get them out to the bond market. Because obviously, individually, we can't float that kind of thing because ours are just too small to be, to be worthwhile. But they, they have a wrap-up program where you can join in with several other municipalities and get to a sizable enough bond initiative that is worth issuing. And I'll, I'll get that information.
But that was about it that I was able to attend.
Councilperson Fuller, would you like to continue?
I'm actually having some internet issues, so I'll just really quickly say, always enjoy the classes. I'll, you know, hit a couple of the same ones as everybody else. But because I am a graduate, I was able to attend the graduate class on the very last day, which was very informative and went into a lot more depth about why people act the way they do and how to have that relationship with citizens and, and more about understanding where they're coming from and how, even though you may not give them everything that they want, how you can actually still make them happy, you know, by, by fulfilling other needs. So as always, it was very educational and worthwhile.
Thank you. For mine, had the privilege of participating in the MML at the end of June. Primary focus for me during the conference was to establish connections and attend courses that directly relate to what I'm experiencing here in Tawny Town. My wife was also there in attendance. She, there was a lot of classes and a lot of different things I wanted to take part in. Luckily, she was a trooper and went to the classes I wasn't able to attend, took notes and relayed feedback to me. So on Sunday, I attended the consensus, consensus and team-building course. During that course, I also had the opportunity to network with multiple mayors from municipalities around us. Interesting class, a lot of stuff that I kind of already knew, but it was nice for a refresher. After that, for the most part, it was networking throughout the day. On Monday. On Monday, I attended the session titled Thirty Tips and Thirty Minutes for Newly Elected Officials. Again, good class, had a lot of good tips for people just coming into the elected official arena. I also expressed my interest. They had a caucus right after that for the, they had a bunch of different caucus roundtables right after that, and I expressed my interest in joining the young municipal leaders of Maryland during that, during their roundtables and helped take notes and get contacts for that. I then had the pleasure of attending the Maryland's, Maryland Mayor's Association Lunch, where I had the opportunity to meet Governor Moore and discuss with him, trying to get veterans more involved into politics. And it was a brief discussion, but it was nice to be able to meet the governor and talk to him a bit about Tawny Town as well. After that, on that same Monday, I attended the Structure of Governments, which gave me insights, insights into various forms of municipal governments, a very insightful class. Talked a lot about the different qualities that our mayor and council has here, very informative, was a pleasure taking. On Tuesday, I attended the MML Business Meeting, where Tawny Town received another year of the banner city designation from MML, which is essentially saying that our town participates heavily in the Maryland Municipal League. So we have another year, and we have a brand-new plaque that we have to put up as well. On that Tuesday, I took the opportunity to go to the exhibit hall with the vendors from all over Maryland, all over the country. A lot of good connections there, a lot of good contacts with a lot of the vendors that serve us here in Tawny Town. And explored a lot of different possibilities of different organizations that could help us and our citizens here in Tawny Town. I actually have a table in my office full of packets and information that I still have to dive through. On that same Tuesday, I attended the secretary's roundtables, where I had the chance to sit with Tim Smith, the administrator of the Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Administration, where we talked about the needs of traffic in Tawny Town, pedestrian safety, and I'm hoping later in the fall to have a forum or workshop with them here in Tawny Town. And we talked a bit about that, and we exchanged contact information, so hopefully we can follow up with that and have a town hall here. I also talked with the, Paul Widerfield, who is the Transportation Secretary, and same thing, kind of talked to him about the traffic and issues that we face here in Tawny Town. It was a pleasure meeting all of them. After that, I talked with the Secretary for Veteran Affairs, Anthony Woods. One of the things I hold near and dear is advocacy for veterans. I'm hoping to hold the town hall here in Tawny Town for veterans so they can address the Secretary for Veteran Affairs of Maryland, just to kind of go over the needs that we face here in Tawny Town and the needs our veteran population faces here in Tawny Town. Sorry not to bore you all. On Wednesday, I attended the public speaking and media interaction class. Good class. As many of you know, I'm still new to public speaking and everything like that, so it definitely had a good amount of tips for me. Overall, I feel that my mission was accomplished during the conference. I made a lot of good connections throughout the state of Maryland. And that's what, that's what it was all about for me, is kind of getting us back on the state-level stage. Right after that, I got back on Thursday, went down to Congress, Congressman Rupert, Rupert, Rupert Berger's office on that Thursday, and talked with him about, then, or talked with him about our need to try to move the Tawny Town post office here in Tawny Town and some other things regarding community discenter and stuff like that. So it is being looked at. I have multiple contacts in that, and I'm following up, following up on it as I can. But overall, my mission is to collaboratively work with the county, state, and federal entities, as well as the local municipalities, and so far, it's going well, and MML helped accomplish that incredibly. Do we have any more updates?
I would like to just briefly go over my notes from the meeting we had with State Highway Administration last Friday.
Yep.
Would like to, on, on Friday morning, last Friday morning on the June 30th, Mayor Miller and I attended a meeting with the SHA District Seven Engineer and his deputy, and we talked about a lot of issues and kind of wanted to, to get together, and I, and I thank Delegate Chris Tomlinson for helping to, to arrange this. And, and Councilwoman Fuller came in and joined us later on and had, as we walked the area downtown. We talked about the status of the bypass measures that we have undertaken. Their property that the county owns, property that we owned apparently jointly with the county, I guess, the Syrian property. And discussed options that are out there in the wind without being specific about what, what, what those things are, and, and talked about where the state could help us with that. You know, if we sit around and wait for the state to generate a project, that could take twelve to fifteen years. Whereas if we work with, work with developers, there are opportunities to shorten that considerably. But on a more immediate front, we talked about the things that can be done downtown, you know, in terms of pedestrian safety. We do know that the delay on the walk light signal for the, for the light at the square will be done by the 31st of July. And that's a contractual thing with their contractor who handles those issues. We talked a lot about turn, left turn signal at the, at the, at the square on Maryland 140, and the state is willing to take a look at that again. You know, our, our position is that numbers don't tell the story. They tend to look at that and they say, well, the traffic counts don't generate enough and, you know. But that comes from somebody who doesn't sit, who doesn't pick up the backup at, at the Sunoco Station and takes six minutes to get up through downtown. And they were kind of surprised that, that, at the extent of those backups. And, you know, we, we express the opinion, we think turn arrows would help that. So they, they're all looking, willing to discuss that. We talked about signage issues. One of the things that we've, we've talked about and that I have asked for, even, you know, eight months ago before I became a councilperson, you know, about signage, the walk lights here in town and getting like LED, flashing LED lights around the perimeter. And, and also the kind of, the signs that tell you your speed and, and kind of give you a, you know, tell you what your speed is and, you know, sitting right there at a speed limit sign. And, and those are very, very effective. And their response was that if we are willing to pay for those, that we are certainly welcome to put them on the state's sign, you know, signpost, as long as they meet the requirements to the MUTCD, the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So having heard that, we think that's a, something we can do, and maybe we should be looking into, you know, how much those things are and can we get them and can we, can we put them up? And, and those things can be done. They need to be approved back through the district so that they do, so they can verify that they meet requirements, but they're perfectly willing to allow us to do that. We talked a lot about crosswalks. We talked about additional crosswalks here in town, you know, at, at the Riffles Lane, coming out of the public, the public parking lot up there and also up at Church Street with the new, now that we have access to that lot as a public lot. Both, both of those locations have issues in terms of being able to put crosswalks there, but we talked about ways to get, you know, there are certain ways to get around some of the issues and things that can be done. So they are willing to look at those, and that's going to require some further discussion. We talked about, talked about rumble strips, rumble strips that are coming into the circle, doing those out of the edges of town, but definitely not in places near enough to a, to a residential area that they would be, would be an issue. And, you know, we can suggest locations to them, and they, they will look into that for us. Some other traffic calming methods that are, that are out there, and they are willing to entertain those sorts of suggestions from us. So it was, all in all, it was a good meeting. The one interesting thing that happened is we were walking back down from Church Street, and we were crossing York Street, and waited for, pushed the button, waited for the walk light. Walk light came on, we started out across the street, and I happened to look over towards my building, and when I looked back, a car had come, made a left turn and almost, and came literally right up to us as we were crossing the street. So that was kind of a object lesson right there. So all in all, I think it was a good meeting. I think that our, our concerns have been heard. I know that we've been working on these things in the past, and, you know, just keep squeaking the wheel and, and hoping for some grease. Anybody have any questions or anything?
Was there any more Maryland Municipal League Experience updates anybody want to share? If not, head into the next one, which is the police search updates. This is both for citizens and council. On June 15th, I shared my strategy for a new search for the Tawny Town Police Chief with our city manager and the city attorney, Jay Gallow. This plan includes additional criteria and responsibilities that we are seeking in our next candidate, also outline the process we intend to follow. The first step is the job advertisement. We've begun that, we've begun the process for accepting applications as of June 24th. We've received two applicants since then. We're looking to do a two-month window for applicants. After one month, if our pool isn't big enough, we're going to look at reexamining our criteria to see what we can do to attract more people to apply for this position. We want to make sure we have a healthy, healthy pool of candidates as we go through the process. After the initial phase, we will conduct a first round of filtering through the applicants who have submitted their applications. We'll then go into a second phase, which is a questionnaire that'll be sent out to the applicants to hopefully narrow down the pool a bit. From there, we'll go into a scenario-based question phase, where the candidates will be given scenarios, and we'll receive answers, and we'll do another filter from there. In the end, this will lead us to the interviews, which will have an interview panel consisting of the city manager, myself, the city clerk, a local community member, retired chief and professional officer, councilperson, Beth Chaney is the police chief liaison, and an officer from the Tawny Town Police Department to share their insight. As we go through this, as we go through the interviews, when we get to the interview part, I'm hoping to have four candidates at that point. We'll also be conducting the background and, oh wow, background and reference checks. Once that has been completed, I'm going to be asking the panel after the interviews to basically give me their feedback on all the candidates, as well as each of them to suggest a candidate they feel was most appropriate for the position, so I can review them and present a nomination to council as soon as possible as the process is done. And again, that is an update that we have officially begun the search on June 24th, and we have two applications thus far. It's posted on Police App as far as handling the applications, and that was done through feedback that I've received on the app. And then it's also posted to the Tawny Town website. We're also looking at ways to expand our advertising reach, and we expect it to be expanded as we're going through the process. We were looking at trying to get on the municipal, Maryland Municipal League's search for it, but since they redid their website, that's no longer an option. They don't have that currently, and it's not going to be available till we're done, essentially. Other than that, does council have any questions, discussion, concerns for me in regards to the police chief update? Hearing none, I'm going to go into the public comment pertaining to agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience that has comment regarding agenda items? Start with the lady in the back, she hasn't had a chance to come up yet.
My name is Delajumoke. I came in a bit late, so I missed out some point. I just want to ask concerning the amendment to the community village. So in summary, does this mean that family daycare is now allowed? And can we go on to apply for the zoning permit?
So we still have to go through the actual adoption process on Monday.
Okay.
And after we do the adoption process, how can they start the process back up?
Explain the process, Jim.
If you want to go ahead and explain the process.
So assuming the ordinance passes Monday, with that piece still intact, you'll then be able to go apply for the Board of Appeals hearing. But I, I think you had started that process and then, so after Monday, again, assuming the ordinance passes Monday night, you'll be able to go in through that process through the Board of Appeals to move forward with family daycare.
Well, how do we get notified?
I'll make sure the zoning administrator reaches out to you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
He has your contact info.
Thank you. Any additional comments pertaining to agenda items from the public? You're up, Jim.
So Jim Thomas on Dear Road. I just have a question for you on the traffic stuff. I have two things I want to say. Was there any move around the truck issue from the state about temporary weighstation inspections, which was a primary part of your initial plan, as I remember?
Actually, we talked to the state police who were here. You know, part of our conversation last Friday revolved around the accidents that happened the previous Friday. And while I was out at that, the accident, the big one that happened on the square, I talked to a state trooper about it, and he, he explained the process to me, and there is a process for getting the state out here. Now, I also believe that the sheriff's office has, in fact, I saw him just this afternoon, had a tractor trailer pulled over down in Westminster. We can reach out to the sheriff's office and ask them for some, some DOT enforcement.
Okay. So that's, that's.
That's the answer. And that's, and that's not a state highway administration.
Right. I just, it's a linking to the plan is all.
There's multiple avenues for it, and we are exploring different ones, even at our own Tawny Town Police Department. Again, we'll continue examining it. I know we've talked with the sheriff's department as well about how can we just slow down the amount of truck traffic that is coming in. It, it is being looked at, and we are, we are diligently trying to accomplish it.
So last thing is, is the term limit question. Not about term limits, but this is a perspective from this side of the seating. So from my perspective, until you solve how to get people here, you're never going to get people here. And so I would just encourage you as a group to really change your perspective. I understand, Chris, your perspective on the spirit of wanting to make a difference, but I think that you're missing the point, that again, until this is full, people are not going to move to this position. And the second thing is, from hearing the discussion, it feels like there's some healing to be done on this end, because a lot of the comments were very personally directed for one another. So again, I, I don't think until it heals up here that this is going to fill either. So I would just encourage you all to do your own, work around the things that still feel like unfinished business. And I think when that's solved a little bit, that that'll also create an environment here that will then encourage people to participate, and then these folks will be able to move to here, to the front of the room with more ease. So, thank you.
Good evening. It's past my bedtime. And I will say, I want to say this, I do appreciate you guys, because I've been a Tawny Town citizen for a long time, and I've come in and out of these meetings, and I haven't been to the meeting since Mayor Miller has been here, but I have heard good things. Oftentimes, when we are fighting for the same thing, it just looks different, but at the end result, it's the same. But I want to say this, when I, I never came to these meetings because they look closed. When you read the meetings, how the invitation is, it says mayor and city council workshop. Now, as a young mother, I thought, wow, only the city council and mayor can go to these meetings. I think you should hold a public forum to let the community know that you're here, that you're open, and that you would embrace us, just as you, Mayor Miller. Door knocked. You guys need to come out and door knock and get these people more involved to come and, like he said, fill the seats up. Do anything. I always feel closed, but as I've become a woman, I am intrigued myself often, because how else are you going to find things out? So I make that suggestion to you, and I pray that things work out for everybody. I think you're all here for the same reason, just looks different.
And we encourage you to come back.
Do we have additional public comment pertaining to agenda items from the public? Hearing none, I'm moving to adjournment, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, the public hearing, I think, is still open.
Oh, my bad. I apologize. So now, I would like to, is there any more public comment regarding to the Community Village Revisions, Section 205 dash thirty-five point one? I'm about to close the public hearing for it. Hearing none, I'm officially closing the public hearing on Community Village Revisions, Section 205 dash thirty-five point one. And from there, I am looking for a motion of adjournment.
So.
Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
All the, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.